Okay, it's all quiet. So we're gonna go ahead and get this started so we can get everybody home. I appreciate everybody coming out this close to Christmas. I know some people weren't very happy about it. We'll go call this to order. Candace, would you like to lead us in your last pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving to number two, adoption of the agenda. Second by Laurel. Going on to number three, superintendent's report. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas. We have with us, from the Nevada Appeal, Ms. Tanya Champa. And I would like to invite her to come forward at this time.
Good evening. So it's a pleasure to be able to be here this evening and just to share a little bit about where this donation is coming from. It's the Literacy for Life Golf Tournament that we hold annually, and we were proud to be able to raise funds this year and give back to the Success for All Foundation. So, and specifically to the kindergarten program. So I'm very happy to be able to present a check in the amount of $1,800 to the organization. I'm sorry, I don't have like one of those super giant life-size ones.
Appreciate it.
And Merry Christmas. Here's an envelope, I guess, for you. Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Madam President, members of the board, just a few other items. It's a little too soon to really think about this yet, but Monday, January the 5th is when we start school up again. That is what we do. And so we look forward to welcoming our students back and our staff members as well after having had a little time off. And then shortly thereafter, Monday, January the 12th is an early release day, and our students will be released at the typical time. So really, members of the board, we had anticipated having a relatively short meeting tonight on all aspects of things, so that will do my report for today.
Thank you very much. Board reports. Seeing no boards here. Moving on to number five. Oh, that's us. Sorry.
There's not a single board here.
Oops. Okay. Starting with Candace. Steve?
I have two things to bring up. First, January 5th, as I remember, is also the date of the swearing-in ceremony for all the new officials.
Six.
Six, Tuesday?
I thought it was the sixth.
Do we know?
Monday, the 5th.
Well, that's what I thought it was, Monday, the 5th. And so anyone who wants to come and express their applause or sympathy for those who means, that'll happen. The other thing that we should make note of, that I think Mr. Stokes brought up and we should do as an announcement, is there will be some high school traffic concerns, as I remember, in January. You want to make note of that? 21st, I think.
Yes, thank you, Trustee Reynolds. We do have some preparations to get ready for on, beginning with the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, which I believe is the 20th of January. The intersection from East Robinson and Salomon, running north along Salomon to the road, and I forget the name of it, that turns into Mills Park right across from Carson High School, is going to be torn up. The city will be putting a water line from that intersection and down to where that road turns into Mills Park. And they're expecting to have that job completed in about four days, but it will cause significant disruption to the traffic flow around the area. The only lanes that will be open on Salomon will be the northbound lanes, and so we're making arrangements for some extra assistance to help us as we live through that week. But yeah, wanted to make our students and also our parents aware of that, and we'll have more information as it becomes known. But there will be some disruption that third week in January in front of Carson High School.
Thank you. Laurel?
Yes, I don't have a report for the Early Childhood Center fridge, but I did want to report that the Carson Middle School Lego Robotics teams, all three teams are advancing to the finals January 24th. So they did well in the qualifiers.
Joe?
No report tonight.
Ron?
Yeah, just a little follow-up on that Lego Robotics. If those of you who didn't go, you missed a treat. You know, the kids were excited, and it was nice of what Lee Conley, Dr. Moulden, Lisa Saki Coop, what they did in putting this together, helped organizing it with D. Freewert and all the volunteers. I just talked to parents from other schools that were not in Carson, and they were all just pleased as could be. It just went very, very smoothly, and the kids were excited. It was just a real tribute. Then, Joe, last time you talked about the Women in Engineering. I did go to that. There were 23 of the young ladies that showed up for that.
Nice.
Yeah, and it was the young lady from Endot who made the presentation. Just what a tremendous job she did. Every one of these kids were engaged with this because of the underlying message was, why aren't you going into engineering? And it was, she went through a story of her own. You know, sometimes you were told that engineering is not a place for women, and she said, well, it's time for us women to take over. And so all the kids got, you know, got really excited. So Michelle Lewis in putting this thing together, it's just the start of something really, really, really good. So with that, Madam President, that's my report.
I'm met with the foundation meeting, and just wanted to report back that it's in full swing and it's going fast. So you're gonna see a lot of production here pretty quick after the first of the year. So I just wanted to let you know, everybody's very productive. It's an Ian Hill progress, because it's just a jamming and jamming and jamming. So I just wanted to let you know that they are totally working on it, and we should have a really good report in January. And as far as NASB, the new board member orientation is January 23rd and 24th. And that's all of mine. Onto association reports. This is where I don't see anybody, so we'll move on to number six. This is a time for public comment. This is a time for the public to come up and talk about something that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes. Please state your name, full name for the record. Seeing nobody moving to the podium. We'll move on to number eight. Informational update on Capitol Project's security improvements at Carson High and Pioneer High School. Mr. Schaefer, welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you, President Wilkie. Keith Schaefer, for the record, not of Carson City School District, unfortunately, but in my new role with Manhard Consulting as your owner's rep and project manager for your Capitol Projects, the last two that we're doing for security and those kinds of improvements. I am so sorry. I've got about a 30-slide presentation, and we're just gonna go through it. Some of you, you've been there, you've seen the pictures, but I'm just gonna walk you through it real quick. Expose of some things that have happened at Carson High and at Pioneer High, and we'll just get through that. Just want to show you, remind you real quick, this is Carson High Site Security Project. These are the places where we were planning on making some improvements out in the front. We're gonna do an ADA parking and then the fencing over here in the south side of the school, and then some fencing and gates over by ROTC, and then a north automatic gate in the back. This gate right here and that gate are both vehicular gates that will automatically open. That has become necessary a little bit because the district moved grounds to the back of the high school. And so now with so much traffic of grounds going in and out, they need to be able to have those gates open and shut. Just if you'll remember real quick, this is what the security fencing is gonna look like on the south side of the high school. The tie-in to the tech center and then this envelope tying back into the ROTC. This is a rendering of what the entry gates really, sorry about that, but that's about what the architectural feature will look like. And that's what it looks like if you were standing in the parking lot and the high-tech center is to your left, this is what the gates would look like. This is a picture of how it looks today or this week. Those are the masonry columns that define the door sets and the gates. This is the sidewalk leading to the tech center. This is just a lot of scaffolding and fence work, but the fence will come along the south side of that main sidewalk. The office is over to your far left, where you enter the main office of the building. And so there will be a decorative or a black iron fence that comes across here and goes down there and ties into the tech center, and all of that on the inside will be in the envelope. This is what those gates will look like from the south, the parking lot, the high-tech center is on your left. That's a door set where some gates will be. This is what they look like today. And then, of course, everything behind these is going to be a new sidewalk quad area where they will be able to access all the way through from the far east side of that south side of the school, all the way over to the high-tech. No more real grass in there to manage because there'll be a lot of traffic in there.
Drainage be better? Is when that was passed, it was all.
Yes, the drainage will be better. Yes. We take care of those kinds of things. We have to. And those are large considerations. The maintenance folks have been highly involved in the design with regard to, you know, don't put rails, don't put features that will not allow us to plow. You know, it's gonna be a pretty large, comparatively expansive area of concrete from that far east side all the way over to the tech center now, so the kids can go back and forth. This is the east, this is the very south side set of doors, and this concrete will be placed tomorrow on that grade as they are preparing to do that work. This is where the ADA parking is going to be in the front of the school. So right now, the only ADA parking we have designated in the school is over by the high-tech center. Well, that now is gonna be behind a fence. If you parked over there and were a visitor and wanted to get to the front of the school, you'd have to walk out to the street, on the sidewalk, around the high-tech center and come in. So we needed to land a few spaces right here where people would be able to come for visitor parking and drop off. That's what it looked like today. They will be bringing base in and being preparing that to pour concrete on Friday or Monday, depending on the weather. I guess tomorrow or the next day. You know, we've been really fortunate. We were supposed to have some pretty bad weather, and it's worked out well for us so Moving on to Pioneer High, just want to remind you or refresh a little bit. This is the campus of Pioneer High from a bird's eye view. This is adult ed clear over here and the B building, and this is the main A building that goes through on that south part. And this little area right here is the office addition. There's some site work that has already been completed, continuity of sidewalk all the way around. There is a parking lot up in here that doesn't show on this graphic. This is a blow-up of the office addition, shows a couple of offices and a conference room, a secretarial suite, an entrance, and the secure door. So it's an admin office addition. I'm just gonna go through a series of pictures of what it looked like through the course of construction to get grade right and to make sure that we comply with ADA and accessibility issues. You know, this thing lives way up at the finished floor of the existing building, which is about that high. And they developed a pad, put utilities through there for connectivity, for fiber and communications and power. They prepared the pad, they cut the front end off of the building, poured a slab. Poured a slab. I'll continue. This is a block building, and they began to place the block, and that looked good to there. And I thought, this is coming along well, but then I got to looking at how tall that rebar was, and I thought, man, are we really up that high in there? And I was pretty concerned. I thought, you know, the renderings that you get sometimes from an engineer and architect, you like them to feel like they're to scale, and you don't know if you're looking at it from John Street or if you're looking at it. It didn't quite look that out of proportion to me, but it has grown on me, I think, a little bit. As we have moved forward, there's some real tie-in with this, as you see it. That's the finished exterior part of the building. This is the interior framed up without any interior walls that demise the areas. That's the conference room area. This is gonna be the reception. This is what the corridor looks like today in the old Pioneer School. I'm standing in the school looking at the new addition. Let me go back here. That is a student counter. So if you're walking, if you're in the school on this side, that window opening there is a student counter where you would check out, and then you would move to your right, and then that's the door that goes to the front door. There are a lot of structural elements with this building. This building is interesting. The original building is not insulated, and it's made of like two-by-threes. And the structural engineer, we did not attach, this is the wall of the new building against the old, and it's about four to six inches away from it. It's isolated, doesn't, it doesn't, it ties in at the roof with flashing, but so they're kind of built a brand-new building right up against an existing building. It's not like we punched a hole in the wall and just went out there. That's what it looks like today. I should've taken a picture earlier this week. I should've taken a picture further out because you can see how it ties in with the rest of the school. And over here on your right, your far right, over here, there's a pad where we'll put the flagpole. You'll be able to see that from Stuart. It really kind of makes that finish look a little better there.
Mr. Schaefer, could you go to the last slide that you were just on and talk a little bit about the red bricks?
These, this block is, it's a masonry block, or it's like a, but it's, it matches the brick on the building. However, we had a supply of that that was used at Borderwick that we had no use for. And so we, working with Mr. Kornick and the contractor, they said, hey, maybe we can work this into the construction, and so they did. We're a little bit nervous about this much paintable space. And actually, yesterday, we got tagged a little bit on the front door. The front door is not here. The front door is around over by, there's gonna be an awning that sticks out there and some stairs, and it was pretty minimal. It was a Sharpie marker that somebody wrote something on an aluminum door. It wiped, it wipes right off. But our concern is, should we try to surface this with some sort of a clear, and they make it graffiti proof, if there is such a thing? It is sealed, so it, which was, in the last couple of days, when we've had weather up around the 50s, we were able to get that sealed so that over the break, if some kids decide they want to do something, we can at least get to it pretty quick. There's a sidewalk in front of this that connects with the city sidewalk, and so there will be a sidewalk, there'll be railing up these stairs, and then there'll be some more decorative fencing on this side, and then that encloses in this side over here. This is what it appears coming up to the front of the building. There's a little parking area to your, to this side of you, on the left, and then there's a ramp that gets you up to the front doors, and then you walk in there and you're in the office. That doesn't look too bad, and I wanted to show you this because this is what Carson High will look like. That's the same kind of fence structure that we'll have at Carson High with a series of some of those masonry entry points that give it kind of a little, you know, demarcation of this is where you go. And then, of course, it will be making sure that those are, those are wired up and they're constructed with the right kind of hardware so that it provides the security that we need. But when this is finished and the fencing around the rest of the campus, this will be the only way in, and they'll need to check in. That's what it looks like with the tie-in kind of over there with the existing building.
Keith, are there any plans for, sorry. Keith, are there any plans for something that says?
Pioneer High School.
Yeah, the name of the school.
Yeah.
And where would that go?
Possibly right there. Out, right where I'm standing, there's a planter that's on our property. It's outside of the right-of-way, and there's been some talk about, you know, putting a monument sign there or just using that as a monument sign. I'm not sure that we would put anything up here. I think, actually, we do have Pioneer High letters, the metal letters. They go on the front of the building. But as far as the Panther logo, you know, there's some talk about, you know, we'd be Panther purple. Would we do something on some of these areas? So that's coming along. Let me just share with you a little bit about the timeframe for both of them. We are, we are making great progress. We have, we've got one request for a change order in time, just some extra time, but these dates reflect that contract change order. However, I estimate that Carson High will be done closer to the 15th of February, all complete and done, and that Pioneer will be done March 1st at the very, very latest. We will, that one corridor that you saw, that will be all finished at the end of break, so that's all cleaned up, painted, and ready to be used from the existing school side. And then what we'll be waiting for in the new addition is carpet and cabinets and doors. And that's about where we're at. They're really making great, great progress. Contractually, both of these are within, within the GMP contracts that we signed with contractors, and there are no change orders that are taking us outside of that right now. There have been some things that we have added as a district as we've gotten into some of these projects. Mark Kornick would say, oh, I want to add some sprinkler lines to get over to this side, or we ought to add some valves, or we ought to add some things. So there have been some things periodically here and there where he has added some from either his maintenance budget. I don't know what budget he got those from. I don't know if that's accurate, Mr. Feeling, but I think it is. We've had to, as we've gone through and added elements. Now, one of them that was kind of a significant add was the south vehicular gate over by the ROTC was never really part of the plan, but because we moved the grounds to the high school, we decided that was an important feature. And so when we put the plans out, we bid it to get the number. It came in kind of high, about $40,000, to do all the work necessary to put an electric operating gate. But Mark, Mr. Kornick, was able to find the money to be able to do that, so that's in the project that it's gonna get done. That's all I have for today. Any questions?
Any questions? Steve?
Keith, it has been good to see the progress rate on both projects. Question regarding both schools. Are we, how's this gonna work when students are coming in in the morning? Do we have enough gates or doors that they can all get in in a reasonable amount of time?
You know, that is a really good question. I think that's been asked with every facility that we've done, and I think that that's, that's a little bit, that's an operational. We're gonna give them the tools that when school is in session, the gates are locked. I don't think that we have any school that takes all of their student population through the main front door entrance during receiving time. All of our elementary schools receive them to the playgrounds. The doors in the buildings are locked, but they receive them to the playgrounds so they're on campus. When the bell rings, the custodians go around and lock the outside gates along the road and the sidewalk, and then that's shut, and then they open the doors to the building.
With our design at Carson High, we have enough gates that can be left unlocked at receiving time that it should flow?
Yes.
Okay. That's the question I was asking.
Let me just show you, I'm gonna pull up this.
Now, that's fine. If the answer is yes, that's all that's curious.
Yeah. That has been a very significant design criteria. We, the doors that will go in between these pilasters, these masonry pilaster columns, are heavy-duty doors that have self-closers on them, but they have to have crash bars on them so we can get people out, just like you would get out of a building or a room. Those doors will not be operational as an ingress from the outside necessarily. Right next to every one of these sets of concrete pilasters, we're putting what we call a fence gate that is open during receiving time. It's like a 10-foot wide or an eight-foot wide gate at every one of those sets of columns. That will be open during off-hours, that will be open during a concert, that's where you can come and go from the school. But when school's in session, that fence gate will shut, then these door gates are the ones that if you had to get out of that building to a public way, you go out, you go out through those. So, good question.
Anyone else?
We'll be wrapping those up mid-February at the latest, and I think it'll be exciting to see that. I sure hope at Carson High we're not tearing these things down in five years. I think it's a, I think it's a good thing. I think we've, we've made it architecturally fit with the area, and I think it's gonna create a nice place for the students to hang out. So, that's all.
Great.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schaefer. Have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. You, too.
Moving on to number nine, discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes of the following CCSD policy, second reading policy 910, district-wide parental involvement for possible action. Mrs. Dockery.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and senior administration. This is our second presentation of the board policy for which we've actually renamed to Parent and Family Engagement Policy, that, of course, is just a good policy for us to have in general, but also fulfills the requirements of No Child Left Behind Title I portion of that. So we made, in coming back to you this time, we made the corrections that you asked for in the policy, and so I don't know if anybody has any other questions. for in the policy, and so I, I don't know if anybody has any other questions on the policy.
Laurel?
I just have a question. Um, let's see, one, two, three, four, five paragraphs down, the first indented paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
And it may be that it's a statutory definition, but we don't include guardians in there. And is that because it's a statutory definition, or should we include-
It is a statutory definition.
Okay.
And that doesn't exclude them from this. So do we have any other comments?
Any other comments, questions? This is an easy group today.
So we would like to request that the policy, I'm not sure what to do right now, Mike.
Yeah. So we're looking for a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the proposed changes to the following CCSD policy, policy 910, and approve December 23, 2014 as a revised date.
Second.
Second by Candace. Any other board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Policy passes. Thank you for all your changes, and appreciate that.
And, oh, did you want to go to the next item? I don't know. Okay.
Moving on to number 10, discussion on proposed changes to the following CCSD regulations, Regulation 910, district-wide parental involvement for discussion only.
These are the regulations that go along with that policy, and my understanding is you do not need to vote on those, but you do need to review them and offer any suggestions that you have. And just to refresh your memory from last time, um, we took the, this policy and regs to our, um, community PLC, and we had a group of parents, of 12 parents, that reviewed this policy and regulations with us very, very carefully. We broke them up into small groups. They each took a chunk of it, and they did a great job of revising this policy. I actually did not, none of these revisions. They all came from our parents, and they did just a great job. You know, I, I just checked it to make sure that we were meeting, you know, the requirements, and then, of course, Mr. Pavlakis did the same for the law. But I just really want to applaud our parents because they just did a great job in, um, you know, updating some language, asking great questions, and adding some things, um, to the policy, particularly in the very last section, um, where we have a list of, of additional kinds of parent involvement activities that could, that could, could go on at a school. And, um, I also want to add that there was quite a discussion, um, there's a section in here about, um, you know, going, reaching out to parents in the home. And some of our parents felt very strongly that we shouldn't have that here, that we should ma, require parents to come to us, since we have quite a lively discussion around that. And, and, you know, came to the agreement that, of course, we want parents to come to school, but we also want to be able to go to them. Well, so it's very interesting to see different perspectives on that from our parents. So I really appreciated that.
Questions? Laurel?
Yep. I just went through, and, um, a couple of things just right off the bat. District-wide, throughout the youth, sometimes we use it with just a space, and sometimes it's hyphenated. So just pick one.
We can clean that up.
And then guardians, um, we don't mention them, and I know it's kind of wordy, and I, I believe parents would be exclusive, or inclusive of it, but maybe just a statement at the beginning to include guardians, you know, list all the relationships and then do it. Um, and then, um, a couple of specifics on page three, paragraph two, um, middle of the sentence, or middle of the paragraph, um, I think it's the second sentence, "The district will provide, train, and encourage parents to better understand the school review and improvement process." I don't know if provide is the best, best verb there, because I'm not, to me, the sentence didn't make sense. The district will provide parents, I, I don't know. Um, so maybe just rethink-
It probably could just read, "The district will train and encourage parents." That might be the best, easiest-
Yeah, it just seemed a little-
I agree, yeah.
Um, out. And then on, um, page five, the very, um, paragraph C, the very last, actually, it's the second paragraph under C, um, where it talks about working with partners, um, and then it says provide, and I think the two was deleted, but I think we need to keep the, "Working with partners such as blah, 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 blah," to provide professional development. I think we need to keep that too. It's crossed out, uh, but I think we need to say to provide professional development on parent family engagement.
Are you under C?
Uh, yeah, the second paragraph under C.
Oh, I see. Okay.
One of the, there's a, there's a two that got crossed out, TO-
Yes, okay.
That should stay there. Um, sorry, I'm, I just went through it, so-
No, that's good. We appreciate another eye on it. We really do.
Paragraphs, or pa, page six, and paragraph E, I'm not sure if para, um, paragraph E, parent programs, I'm not sure if that's hyphenated or not, maybe, I don't know, take out the hyphen, is what I would do. And then the second paragraph, um, the last sentence, the second paragraph under E on that same page, um, just because the first sentence uses just, "The district will use a variety of media methods," I'd keep it the same and say "The district will provide communication when possible," so it's the same tense. And finally, sorry, um-
I'm sorry, can you-
Oh, sorry, you didn't catch that one. Okay.
The district will use-
Okay, yeah, the first sentence says, "The district will use a variety of media," so it's present, it's, or future.
Oh, I see, I see.
And then the last sentence, "The district will provide communication."
I see, yes, thank you.
Um, and then on page seven, um, I think that we should, the first, the first sentence, the first bullet on page seven, "Inform about the professional development," I think we need to keep the "of" in there.
Yes, I think you're right.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, um, the, the last bullet and the bullet, um, two up from that, so establish. It's just that everywhere else we've used enlist, um, and then we've got, those two are establishing and providing. I think you should just make it establish and provide.
Okay. And I, I wanted to note on that first bullet involved parents about the professional development of teachers. We did have a parent commentary that said, when, 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 when we are, school is off for professional development, uh, when children are not attending, that parents really want to know what's going on that day and what kind of, um, professional development that they are involved in. I thought that was a really great comment.
Yeah, that is a-
They would like to know, you know, why, what are our teachers doing today? What are they learning about? I thought that was a great comment.
And then I have just one more question.
Sure.
Um, back on page two, um, where we talk about, um, the first bullet under paragraph one, at the very bottom of the page, "The district will work with cons, will work in consultation with each Title I school to appoint parent representatives." Um, will we only have parent representatives from Title I schools, or will we include-
No.
-parent representatives from all schools?
It will be all schools, but the regulate, the Title I regulation requires that.
How can we word that to include, not, not, to satisfy the regulation for Title I, but to also include-
Maybe we could just say, "The district will work in consultation with each school," and then maybe in parentheses, put, "Including Title I."
Yeah.
Title I schools. Okay.
Okay. So, thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
Anybody else? Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I also wanted to just make another comment about, um, the Lego competition, the robotics competition. Um, the teachers who acted as the coaches were paid stipends through our Gate funding to, and Gate is supporting that project. So not just for Gate students, but for also, I just wanted to add that we, we are involved in that, so.
Thank you. Moving on to number 11, discussion and possible action on resolution to approve and amend budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015 to include revisions for certified enrollment, audited fund balances, carryforward amounts, and recommended argumentations to specific funds for possible action. Mr. Feeling.
Good evening, trustees.
Before you get started, really enjoyed what you put in the executive summary. It was very detailed and, and helped out with a lot of questions that we might have had that you answered before we even had a chance.
Thank you. Um, so you have in front of you, uh, the amended budget for this current, uh, 2014 through 2015 school year or fiscal 15. Um, some, I'll just kind of mention a, a couple of those things, um, that are probably the most notable, and then if you have any questions, you can, uh, follow up with that. Um, if you would turn to page thirteen in the budget, that is the page that shows the, um, it's kind of the bottom line for the general fund, which, of course, is of, of great interest. And there are a couple of changes I, I just wanted to point out. Um, first, about halfway down, you'll see, um, the number 6,200, and it says, "Other fund transfers," and the, the fund transfers are broken out, um, as they were in the, the May final budget, but there were some, some changes there. Um, first, there was a change to the fund transfer, um, there, there is now a fund transfer on, in the class size reduction fund. That doesn't really reflect any change, um, other than there was some money left in the class size reduction fund from last fiscal year, a, a fund balance, if you will. Um, and we need, we need to use that up by the end of this fiscal year. So there was some, some transition of, um, certain teachers to be defined as class size reduction to help, um, use up the rest of that money before, for the end of the fiscal year. So that's why that transfers there, but it, it really is awash with the general fund, because some of the other teachers has moved into the general fund, so it's not, um, not really an impactful item, but it stands out as, as being a change. Um, within special education, the fund transfer has increased, uh, quite a bit, um, primarily due to more staffing needs with paraprofessionals and, and special ed teachers, um, also contractor costs as well. Um, the other thing, um, that I, uh, we, so we are given eighty-one units of special education funding. We have eighty-one, um, teachers or, or employees that have a caseload, and so they're considered a unit, and we get about $42,000 per unit. And, and one of those units in our agreement with, um, with Carson Montessori, they, they receive one of those units of value. So that, that's also, um, not only are there some increased expenses, there's also a slightly decreased revenue, um, which feeds into that.
Hey, Jay.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, and maybe I'm not, uh, and I didn't go dig it out, but we're projecting about $500,000 in savings compared to previous year in this category, and it appears now we're going to be matching what, a little closer to previous year. And-
Um, that, that, that does sound about right. I, offhand, I, I don't-
That seems correct.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it would be about where, where we ended up. I, I believe the, the fund transfer in fiscal year 14, um, at, at the end of the year was about 6.15 million, so it's, it's nearly in line with that. Um, I guess we thought there would be some savings, but it, it hasn't, um, quite worked out that way. Um, so all in all, the transfers are, are up, um, in, in the, the bottom line. Um, one other part of note is you go down, there's another number, 6,300 contingency, and, and that is not, uh, there was no number, uh, dollar amount there in the original budget. There, there has been in previous budgets, in the fiscal year 14 budget, in the, the amended, there was, um, I think, $230,000 in a contingency line. Um, and in previous years, going back to, I was looking back at, back at budgets from, um, '08, '07, um, there were significant contingency lines going back, so it's not something uncommon. And the, the reason what that line represents really is, um, money that, there, there is the, the ability to allocate that to the area of need, but it's not necessarily expected to be expended. So it's, it's essentially granting some authority as a contingency in case something would come up. And one of the things, and it, it gets into this philosophy of allowing principals and, and site managers, if they are, um, responsible with their budget, if, if they're able to stay within their budget, that they get to, to keep that amount. Um, and the thought is that if you're allowed to, if you're able to save $1,000 or spend $1,000 under your budget for the year, that you're not, um, going to go and make some expenditures that, you know, trying to spend your money down. So you, you've been responsible, you get to keep that. Um, so that money's available to them, but it's not that I really expect them to spend it in this year. It's just available. And so I think that contingency line is, um, fairly representative of, of kind of that philosophy of, this money's available to them. Um, by approving this, this amendment, you're saying that, yes, it's, we agree that this is, is available to them. Um, so what that does is, in the bottom line of the budget, the actual deficit is around, uh, $1,088,000, which is less than the deficit approved with the May budget. But the way it's represented here, that $1 million contingency shows up as, 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 not an expense, but it, it adds to the deficit. So you have to show it like that money is being spent. So when you really look at the change in fund balance line, and to the right, it says $2,088,000, um, I don't necessarily expect that. I don't expect that. But it represents that if that $1 million were spent, that's what the deficit would look like. The, again, the, having the availability of this money does not mean it's going to be spent, but that, it's just, it has to be represented that way. Um, otherwise, throughout, um, the, the general fund, you'll notice some, um, some changes in, in salaries and benefits, and there's a number of reasons that I, I go through in the, the executive summary describing why that happened. Um, there's been, also in special education, another reason for the slight, or the, the increase in the transfers, that there was a slight increase in funding to the Gate program, and Gate is housed within special, at the Special Education Fund. So that, that increase of about $40,000, that also feeds into that fund transfer. Um, we, um, post audit, um, we, we know that there was money left, um, there was still money available within the bond fund that, um, with previously approved Bond Oversight Committee project of the HVAC system are, um, at Fremont and Mark Twain, specifically the boiler, the whole HVAC project would be way too expensive, but that place in the boiler would fall within that range of that available money. So we thought that was, um, an appropriate project to, um, to put that money towards, since it was, had already been approved by Bond Oversight. Um, I think that's about it. I, I guess I'll, I'll take any questions you would have.
We'll start that in Candace.
Do you have any idea, just looking forward, if the school district was getting the full weight for the kindergarteners, um, that we have, instead of, um, like 66%, two-thirds, do you have any idea how much more money that would bring in per year for the distributive school amount?
Yeah. So we, I've looked at this. So if, if you would look at, um, what we would receive if a kindergartner was a, a 1.0, if they were a real student, a full, a full student, um, versus, you, you look at, we get some class size reduction money for kindergarten, some, um, uh, some full-day kindergarten, kind of not really grant, but kind of grant money, um, in that point, the .6 we currently get, um, there would be, I believe it's an additional about $400,000 to the district, um, if, if they were just counted 1.0, and I mean, you could, so you could get rid of the, um, that full-day kindergarten piece, class size reduction piece, and you would, you'd be 400, you'd have an additional $400,000 to fund your kindergarten program.
And I'll ask another question after Ron, but just, just, would that be enough to pay for full-day kindergarten? Because right now, we're, we're subsidizing it no matter what, but if we had that additional money, would that cover full-day kindergarten costs in the district?
It, it would, it would cover, um, it, it would cover the costs, the staffing costs, uh, better, represent that better. Um, and there would be some leftover then to represent, you know, there are these, um, other overhead costs, if you, or, you know, supply costs and, you know, those types of things that, that really are represented to every other grade level except for kindergarten, because it has this very narrow, or several kind of narrow funding streams. So.
Laurel?
I just have a question on page ten.
Mm-hmm.
I just have a question on page two.
Mm-hmm.
Just because I was trying to figure out the percentage of, um, let me get to it. Just because I was trying to figure out the percentage of, let me get to it.
Right.
And you've got two percentages there. The first one, 15.93%, and then down at the bottom, 19.43%. And I was just wondering, which one, which of the percentage is reflective of this year's ending fund balance?
The, the 19.43%.
Okay. So we actually, with the amendment, we've improved, increased the percentage?
Yeah. So the, the budget that was approved in May, I was still using the previous budget numbers where we thought we would end up, and now this reflects where we really, really did. Correct.
Joe.
I just want, just one question, based on what Candace was talking about. When you said that if kindergarten students were counted at a full, you know, as a whole, that would cover staffing costs, would that cover current staffing costs? Because I know right now, they're sharing aids and whatnot. You know, the aids are kind of being moved around. Or would that allow some stability there?
You know, that, that's actually a good point. The, I'd have to go back at, because I did a little analysis of this, but I cannot recall if I included the kindergarten classroom aids with that or not. So when, when I was speaking of staffing costs, I think it was of, of actual kindergarten teachers within that. So, but that's something, if you, if you'd like, I could come back with a little more of an analysis of what, what that looks like.
You know, I, I think that obviously depends on if, if we could even get to that staffing rate. So at, at this point, I'm okay. But I think it's something to look at.
Absolutely.
Is to, you know, trying to, my thought is, you know, trying to get those dollars where we can.
Right.
In the classroom, and these paraprofessionals, you know, is, is a big help in those classrooms, especially with the younger kids.
Right.
And I think, if you can just give me a ballpark, I think that's going to be something that's going to come up at the legislature, and I think they're going to ask for figures if, if we fully funded with a pair, how much it would be. So just a ballpark would be good for me.
Another somewhat related, with talks of change in funding, they're, they're talking about potentially changing how special education is funded, with giving different, within that weighting system, giving different weights to students with varying needs within that. So that, that would be harder to figure out. I, I, it would take, not that we couldn't do it, but it'd take a little more digging, because we'd have to look at what weightings they're talking about, and what our, our needs are. But I, I believe that that type of funding mechanism would make more sense to me than the unit mechanism that we have now. And I, I do believe it would be more beneficial to us as well. But again, I'd kind of take a bit of an analysis, so I could try to look at that as well.
Ron.
Yeah, AJ, let's just follow, follow up a little bit on the GATE funding.
Sure.
You said that's 40,000 plus. How's it going to be used specifically? You, you've got the vague reference to a strategic plan.
Sure, sure.
But how, how was that going to be used?
Can you speak to that? Okay. Thank you. Save me.
Currently, our, we're providing a GATE endorsement to our elementary cohort of teachers, so that will support the remainder of that training, the consultant that goes with it, and continuing the middle school activities, such as the LEGO robotics type of activities. That's what that will support, as well as, we just got finished with an aviation project, which we'll hear about in January, I believe, and those middle school activities, and then gearing up and planning for the middle school GATE programming.
Thank you. Excuse me. Let's go back to your second bullet on your, your executive summary.
Mm-hmm.
The amount of lost in, in, the amount lost in DSA revenue to Nevada charter schools. Are we talking about all Nevada charter schools? Are we talking about those just in Carson? Or what?
Sure. So, so the way that's calculated out is, they look at every Carson resident of, of, of student age that is attending a charter school. So this would be Carson Montessori, this would be Silver State, but this would also be any charter school within Reno, any, any charters, any virtual school, any, anything online. So it really is, it could be any charter school in the state, and that's why I said Nevada, or use Nevada like that. Of course, most of them are in, in Carson. But it's, altogether, there's about four, it's, because of the weighting, it's 451.2 Carson resident, residents of students, a student's age, that are attending some type of charter school. Again, most of them are, of course, are Carson, Montessori, or Silver State, being the, the local schools.
Well, why wouldn't we, if, say, 450 students are in, in a charter school, why wouldn't we just use the DSA amount of $6,000 that would be lost revenue to the school district? Why, why is it only 1,000?
So there, in, in a sense, we, we do lose that, that 6,000. That, that is given straight away to those schools, that, that amount of money. But then there, there are revenues that are outside of the DSA revenue stream. And so the state is trying to find a way to get those revenues to the schools as well. And, and as an example, so within the DSA, when, when that's calculated out, they're looking at the, the total property tax value that we would collect, which is about 9.2 million dollars. One-third of that is, is a part of the DSA calculation, but two-thirds of it falls outside. So what they're, they're trying to do is, some of these revenues that they feel, because, I, I would assume, because they feel they're Carson City residents, Carson City property taxes, that they should also follow these students. So it, it really, in, in whole, it is a higher number, this, it represents this, this outside, this outside revenue. It's, it's the two-thirds of property tax, government services tax, and franchise fees, I believe are the three that it represents. So it's, it's, it's local revenues that we would, we would collect, but aren't, that are somehow, are due to those kids who are obligated to pay some of that out. But, but we lose it through the DSA payment, instead of coming back to the school district and saying, "Okay, so now you, these outside revenues, because they didn't flow through the DSA calculation, you owe this money, you, we have to cut a check back to, say, all the different charter schools." They just, the Department of Education calculates this number, and then they, they subtract it out of your DSA payment. It's a, it's an easier process for them. It's still rather complicated, but it's, it's easier than us cutting a check back for those costs.
And it's, this isn't the first year that it's happened. It's just the first year it's been broken out for us. Any other questions, comments? Candace?
Just, just to the, the issue about the full-day kindergarten, just wanted if you or Mr. Stokes could confirm, was it the proposal in, in, from the DOE to fund full-day at 18 million? Was that the, the number that was, had been, I think in one of your emails to us, that you had seen that proposal come out from the Department of Education, state in Nevada?
You're talking about a proposal that, that might be aimed towards the legislature for the coming year?
Right, right. Was it 18 million? Was that right?
Was that part of the state, state Board of Education discussion? Yeah, that was, so that was part of the, the Department of Education's budget. So each, prior to each legislative session, the different departments within the state government are asked to provide to the governor their individual departmental budgets. And so I believe that was the number that was put forth to try to fund kindergarten across the state.
Steve.
AJ, I don't want to get too deep into this, because there's a lot of variables, but I want to make sure that I'm thinking about this clearly. Very few charter schools do anything, at least in this area, with full-day kindergarten, or with special education, or with these areas where we actually use fund transfers to pay for the education of these students, transfers from the general fund. So when we take a full, as I look at this, when, when a full distributive account per student is taken away from us and given to the charter school, given to a charter school that isn't supporting these special classes, we're actually getting less, I guess what I'm saying is, is we're, that mainstream student doesn't cost anywhere near what it costs us for special ed or for full-day kindergarten.
Right. I, I understand what you're saying.
For every student that go, for every transfer to, to charter school, because they aren't taking care of those special things, we're actually losing money over on a, on a per student basis.
Well, and, I mean, if you, if you just look at it, it, it really is, it's a function of your special education population, and, and really the severity of your, your special education population, and their, their needs, their IP, you know, rights. And so when, when you have a larger special education population, you're more likely to come across some more severe needs that have some extra costs associated with those. And yes, if, if you have fewer special education students that, I mean, I, I don't know exactly how, how it works, as far as if they have a, if they show a transfer or not within, say, let's say Carson Montessori, just for example. But, I mean, the, the, the average cost of a, of a special education student is higher than your average cost of a regular education student. And so the more special education students you have, on average, the higher those, those costs will, will be, will hit.
Any other questions, comments?
If I could just add one final piece for, when I, when I actually, when we submit this to Department of Taxation, and I'll, I'll just show you an example. If you go back to page 13, at the end of every fund, the expense page I have for every fund, the third last line is "Change in fund balance surplus slash deficit." The Department of Taxation actually does not want that line there. I, I think it's good for you to see it. But so when we do submit it, that, that line will be hidden. It, it, I just, I wanted you to be able to, to see that. So just so you're aware.
Steve.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the amended budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015 by approving the resolution and instructing the Director of Fiscal Services to file the documents as necessary to comply with NRS Chapter 354.
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Any other board discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Please submit.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 12, approval of the consent agenda.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items A, B, D, J, and K as submitted.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to number 13, request for future agenda items. Candace?
I just would like to say thank you to fellow trustees. It has been an honor and a privilege, and I can't tell you how much I've enjoyed working with all of you. Thank you to Mr. Stokes, Bob Lachas, Jose, and all the administration. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you. It's really been a great pleasure, and I wish you all the best for the year ahead. And it's a great school board, and great things happening in the district. So thank you again. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Candace. Your professionalism and the things that you've brought to this board have been amazing, and you're truly going to be missed. But as long as you're in town, we will pull you and suck you back in, any opportunity we get. Any other future? Ron?
Yeah, I would just like to say a farewell to Candace. I really, you know, as a board member, as a trustee, appreciated your planning perspective. The first night that you interviewed and talked about Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and some of the downfalls, I think you, you brought a perspective that was badly needed, and, and you will be missed. And I hope you do, do stay involved. So thank you so much for coming forward.
Okay. With that, thank you all again for coming. Have a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next year.